Recording in progress.
Let's call this meeting order June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, six P M. Would you please say your pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Richardson.
President.
Councilmember Crossman.
Here.
Councilmember Kingizer, here. Councilmember Hess. Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky, here.
Mayor D'Antoni.
Can we get an agenda approval? Councilmember Hess.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, my councilmember Palmer, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Moving on to special presentations, we have none scheduled. Moving on to public comment. Uh, right now, we have one, um, blue card turned in. If there's anyone else, please hand it in. We'll get you on there. Thank you. And we'll, we'll start off with Steve Klein. For the record, do you please say your name for the record?
Sir. Um, Steve Klein. Uh, address is, um, two, one, nine, three, three, Pisser Road. I live in the Lack of Us precinct. This council hasn't seen me. This is the first time I felt compelled to come in and, uh, it's a matter I wanted to share with all of you because I think you'll need to have some information. For those of you that know me, you know, I don't come with notes. I, uh, I'm well prepared and, and I have, uh, a good command of the facts. However, uh, uh, these sessions require three minutes to the public. So I'm gonna read very fast. Maybe I can have an understanding and I hope that after I read this, that, um, you call me back in and I'd be happy to sit with you. I'm here tonight to comment that your discussion at the July fourth study session for an ordinance to remove the library advisory board from the Yale Municipal Code and without public comment lacks understanding and foresight. I'm a former chair of the Yale Citizen Advisory Library Board. Um, and I was appointed in two thousand and four by Mayor Reavis. I served for four years. I'm in a unique position to request that you reconsider until you can get a briefing on how this vital committee is, especially with key library issues facing the city within the next five to seven years. This board was established during the administration of Merrick Pathy Wolf over twenty-five years ago as the city worked with the Timberland Regional Library, T R L, to move from the cramped quarters at the former Yale City Hall building. T R L eventually gave the city an exemption for ten years in two thousand and two to operate in a non-public facility, the Prairie Park Complex and the building owned by Margaret Pla. Back then, the other eighteen jurisdictions in the T R L five county region were all required, I repeat, required, to be in public facilities except Montesanos, which was in a gifted building that the city operated. The five-member Yale Library Advisory Board was directed to gather information and report to the mayor and city council. The librarian was the coordinator and included a Yale community schools teacher, two citizens residing inside the Yale City Limits, and two citizens outside of the Yale City Limits. The purpose was to ensure constituents who paid taxes for Yale's exempt facility would have their interests represented. Yale's responsibility was to supply a structure to house the library, plus pay their share of the operational and maintenance expenses. T R L would supply the books, the staff, computers, and operations of the facility, as you all know. So in addition to property owners inside city limits, property owners outside of Yale City Limits also pay taxes to fund T R L's system, including Yale's. That's why a public hearing to eliminate this board is first warranted, in my view. While Mayor Ron Harding sidelined the duties and functions of the Yale Library Advisory Board when he was challenged in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine about the future of Yale providing a library building by the spring twenty twelve deadline to continue with T R L. Harding announced publicly the city could only afford to spend six hundred thousand dollars, which is hallmark and an envy end story, and there was no suitable building available, according to him.
Final thoughts, please.
At the very last year, our T R L board meeting, August eleventh, they chose to vote to close the Yale Library and Harding presented the board a Hail Mary of the one point two million condo the city would purchase and collapse building. The Yale Library Advisory Board was sidelined. They got no information. And you all have on your budget right now an outlandish O and M expense for this condo over here. My point is this. Did you inform T R L of your decision to vote tonight to eliminate the Library Advisory Board? Who worked with T R L in conjunction with them to support the city's desire and to support T R L's desire to have a library here?
Thank you, Steve. Time's up.
Yep. So I knew that that would probably happen. I'm gonna send this letter and, and I've printed off for everyone a copy of what the responsibilities were that were set up back then uh, by, uh, Mayor Wolf. And it used to be on the city's website. Well, let's take it down, but that explains to you what the role of the Yale Advisory Board was, and I would appreciate that you all read that.
Thank you. Thank you. Nathaniel Walmes.
Uh, my name is Nathaniel Walmes. I am the library manager for the Yale Timberland Library. Um, I am also a resident of Yale. Um, I kind of come here to also encourage you guys to not close that committee. Uh, there's a lot of ways and where the partnership between the library and the city is paramount. Uh, if, for example, there is a new building to be built at some point, that communication about what that building should entail, how that should look, how we can serve the community, how we can serve the interests of everybody, we need to have that conversation back and forth and not just, you know, something between a consultant and the library at the last hour. Uh, because a library can be a lot of different things. Uh, in the, in the eighteen hundreds, there are public libraries that have bowling alleys in them. Uh, there's a public library in Tucson with, with the nurse in it. My last system, we had a social worker that would do acupuncture, ear acupuncture, and group therapy sessions. A public library takes the shape of the community it resides in. We could put basketball hoops and people would come in and borrow basketballs from the library. Uh, we could do gardens, community gardens or greenhouses and grow things year round. And then the things we grow, we can hand out to kids during story time. Um, but also it's for you guys to know all the things going on in the library as well. Uh, one thing that you guys might not know is that we are at pre-pandemic levels of activity in our public library. Not only that, in this year alone, we are forty-five percent up in printing compared to the previous year. Our slowest month this year is, was busier than our busiest month last year. We are continuously getting more and more people, more and more activities. We work with the city and programs like sponsoring Jeff Evans for Prairie Days. We are constantly building programs for yoga, uh, programs for kids. We now have story time four days a week. Uh, we are probably punching above our weight class for public libraries in the T R L system. So I encourage you guys to keep that committee, to fill it up, just so that we can keep that communication alive and you guys can know about the things we're doing and also so that we can better help the city in executing the things that you want to accomplish as well. Thank you. Thank you, Nathaniel.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, councilmember Crossman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
When was the last time the T R L, uh, I'm sorry, the Library Advisory Committee met?
Well, I can only tell you that Mayor Harding sidelined it and their responsibilities were just to give the city council a report annually of what the checkouts were, uh, the activity in the library. Um, and, uh, after that, I, I had no idea.
So they haven't met since turning?
They did not ask for.
I would say, yes, since Mayor Harding. I don't know if, it wasn't during my term that was filled. I don't know if councilmember would.
Yeah, and I believe it was really Ron because I don't remember ever, ever having any, remember anybody being good, uh, having a, uh, somebody.
Probably two thousand.
Well, there was.
Four, two thousand and ten.
I was relieved of duty in, uh, two thousand and nine. And, uh, it did meet, uh, a few times. But then, I think in two thousand and ten, it was just to give a report to the city on checkouts and what their activity was.
It went over a decade.
Yes.
Okay. And then secondly, um, are you guys aware that, uh, we've had T O L updates to council? No?
T R, T R L gives you updates. However, the advisory committee was to represent taxpayers and the public here, uh, and to work with T R L. So T R L may give you updates as to what they are. Yes, I get, I, I get a briefing from them also. But this committee was not just to give P R L checkouts and so forth, uh, which is why I passed you out, what the responsibilities were.
Any other questions for council? Okay, moving on, uh, to Ellen Verbal.
Hi, I'm Ellen Verbal. I live at one, five, four, one in the drive southeast over here in Cherry Meadows. Um, I'm sort of here for the same reason in terms of the library. There hasn't been enough public comment for you to make a decision. I think that you need to have more information before you take a vote on it. That's just my two cents. I find, um, having lived here as a citizen, voting citizen since twenty nineteen, there's a lot of decisions that get made without enough public input. And it's okay that if you put it on Facebook or WhatsApp or Instagram or whatever, um, but to actually get out there, boots on the ground and talking to people, every time I go to the library, the library is full. It's full every single time. There hasn't been a single time. They do a lot of stuff for the kids. You're always looking for outlets for the kids. I don't know why the committee hasn't been staffed. I don't know why the committee hasn't been doing whatever it's been, its mission, its original charter mission was. But I've also found that even though the city may ask for volunteers and stick on your various committees, that not only do you not tell them whether or not they've been selected, you don't even tell them that they haven't been selected. So there's a communication gap, a snap flu happening somewhere, not sure exactly where. But I think that needs to be addressed before you take a vote on what happens with, um, the Library Advisory Committee. That's one. Two, the homelessness issue. Um, I sit on the police advisory board and I talk to Rob and the homeless, the number of homeless is growing. And we don't have any services for homeless. We don't have any. I don't know why they come here, honestly. I don't. But at some point, we need to think about as a community, how we want that to look when we get to a tipping point, and we should have some kind of plan in place, a loose structural shell at the very least. Whether it's a committee, I don't know, but there needs to be at least somebody or some, somebodies thinking about building a structural framework for how to deal with the homelessness. Like I said, I sit on the Police Advisory Committee for, since twenty nineteen. At that point, we only had three homeless people. Now I see a lot more. And when I talked to Rob about it, he has a, um, an understanding of why that's happening. And although we don't have services and may not necessarily want to provide services, I think that we need, as a city, as a community, need to have some kind of structure in place as opposed to letting it be ad hoc. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone online that wishes to testify? Hands raised. All right, will we move it on then, uh, to the councilmember Hess?
I'll say, I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Okay, let me go over what's on real quick. We have the June fourth, twenty twenty four study session, June eleventh, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes, and the April twenty twenty four check register and position summary. It's motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Palmer, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have resolution number six, four, seven, adopting the twenty twenty five to twenty thirty six-year transportation improvement program. Or, Pat, excuse me, Pat.
Yeah, Pat gets to do that. So, good evening, council, Mayor D'Antoni. Um, as most of you probably already know, the six-year transportation plan is commonly known as the STIP. Uh, it's, it's the capital facilities that guides transportation funding on a six-year cycle. The STIP is based on the Yale Comprehensive Plan and is based on the City of Yale's transport, long-range, twenty-year transportation plan. Uh, so it really becomes just a short-range kind of an implementation document, if you will, for, uh, transportation projects over the next six years. Although it is a six-year plan, it's required that it be updated annually. That's why I'm here tonight. Uh, as required by the R C W and as projects are completed and as new projects arise, the project list is updated annually by the Public Services Department. Projects that are not on the STIP are therefore not eligible for state or federal funding. So it's important that we get these projects in. There are nine projects included on this year's STIP, as you will see in your agenda summary and your packet there, and are further, just each one of them is described more in detail uh, with the attached summary sheets for each one.
Pat, do you have the projects in front of you, the list?
No. But I have them in here.
We, um, just list, uh, the packet, uh, that projects off just for the public, all right? We have it on the list. She's gonna, but until then, um, is that all for your summary?
Well, I was just gonna say what's, what's new on the list, if, if that's okay. That's, that's all I've got. Um, so there's nine projects on the list. There's two new additions to the STIP this year. Uh, I'm adding the Walmart Boulevard, uh, the, the extension of Walmart Boulevard down to Bald Hill Road. And we're also having to add the, uh, Wash Dot Funded Roundabout, five oh seven. Even though we're doing that project, it's still state-funded, needs to be on the STIP. Three projects have been removed from last year's list. That was phase two of the Yale Prairie Lane Trail that is now complete. Our ADA Transition Plan that was completed in twenty twenty-three and our ADA Sidewalk Ramp Rehabilitation Project that's currently under construction. So.
Questions? Pool list is up on the screen. Councilor Crossman.
Oh, not a question for Patrick, but you might know the answer. Uh, if the public wants to find this list on the website, how would they go about doing that?
It'll be posted on our website.
The easy way to find it? Do we know the clicks?
Uh, you go to your. I, I don't know the path, but it's like, uh, I, I want to view like projects and plans and then underneath that will be the
like three clicks you can find that.
Sounds like it's. All right, councilmember Hess.
Oh, to use a reference to the STIP and the twenty-year plan that, uh, comes from that. Uh, how, how do we go about adding things to set twenty-year transportation plan?
Well, that's at our discretion. That's not a required plan for R C W. So it was last updated in twenty twenty-one and we're looking at updating that now because things have changed considerably. We've got some new things that we're gonna put on it. So it's not a required plan, but we're looking at re, re, redoing it. So I can just meet with you to have, hopefully some ideas you have.
How, what's the reason for funding? For, for what reason do we have this STIP?
Well, again, like I mentioned, projects that are not on the STIP are not eligible for state and federal funding. All of state and federal funding is based on budget. Uh, the state and federal worked on different schedules, but they need to plan ahead for how this money is going to be spent, what's needed. So they look ahead for the next six years in the federal case to see what, what's needed out there to help some budget for that six-year cycle.
It's also very hard for state funding as well without it being on the STIP.
It needs to be in a plan. You can't just come up with an idea for a project and apply for funds. It needs to be part of a, of a overall planning.
Thank you, Pat. Councilor Crossman.
The, the large concern of citizens is traffic and all these really help move traffic along. Uh, so it's good to see. So I move to approve resolution number six, four, seven.
Second, my councilmember Palmer, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to thank you, Pat. Moving on to ordinance number one, 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 six, repealing chapter two point three six, chapter two point six three from Yale Municipal Code. Um, Kathy, is this you, T N S offer, is this me?
Yeah, but you and council.
Okay, um, so there's been discussion at multiple meetings now whether there should be, um, certain committees in existence um, for the City of Yale. One included is the Yale Homelessness Committee, which was established, I believe, in twenty twenty, excuse me, last year by the city council. And officially, all those are recommendation by the by the Yale Homelessness Task Force, um, that was approved. Uh, the other is the Yale Municipal, excuse me, um, the Yale Library Advisory Board is, we heard earlier, um, during public comments. Uh, we haven't had that in existence for at least twenty ten. And, uh, it hasn't been filled. However, if council does not approve that, I will go ahead and fill that position, um, and we will staff it if that's what council, um, wishes. Otherwise, it's on the agenda to dis, to repeal both of those committees. If that's what council wishes, that's, we'll go ahead and move forward with. Councilmember Hess first.
Yes, um, according to the memorandum that was written there, one of, I, I have an issue with, uh, one of the elements of it, and it's the word feasibility. Feasibility deals with costs, things like that. And if I recall correctly, the discussions that have all been about removing these two is because the people who brought it up and who support such have basically stated that these committees are no longer needed. They're just not, it's not feasibility. It's that they feel that they're no longer needed and that it's the issue is no longer an issue. And so, I mean, I, I disagree with it. And that's why I disagree with this, is I believe we still have reasons to have these two committees.
Uh, councilmember Palmer.
And I'd like to point out that all of these things that are discussed in these committees, they can schedule a spec, a special presentation like the library, like, we've had people come and present to us. So it's not like we're shutting the door, like you can't talk about this ever again. You can come to council and we can discuss it in our open forums like this. We're happy to. So it's not closed doors, just we're just bringing it in to this format instead of having the committee that has been a defund committee anyway for the one. We're just, yeah, we're not shutting the door on anything. It's just these committees aren't the way we want to go about it.
Any comments? Councilmember Crossman.
Um, in regards to the Library Advisory Board, like I said, it's, hasn't been operational in over a decade. Uh, I don't know any councilman or any citizen that wants to do away with the library. I don't know anybody who wants to say, no, we don't have libraries. Not, nothing against libraries. It's just a deep on committee that this doesn't really, hasn't been operational, doesn't do anything. And no one's come up before to say, hey, I wanna, this is issue. So it's like, why do we have this? Nobody's raising a fuss for it, you know, it's on the books. Let's clean up the stuff. Um, so that's kind of my opinion on that is like, why do we even have it? Nobody, nobody seems to care until we, you know, threaten to take it away, then all of a sudden everybody cares, but no one knows anything about it. No one's been on it. No one's serves on it. No one's brought it up before. So it's like, okay, it doesn't give me cause to keep it because nobody's against the library. We're not threatening to take away the library restricting or reducing any kind of thing to the library. So it's like, and then the homelessness committee, there's nothing stopping people from forming a committee to help with the homeless. There are many on this council that help with homeless regularly. There's many committees that help. So there's, there's no reason to really have a government entity to waste time when people could be now doing stuff, doing the actual work instead of, let's sit in a meeting and talk about things. Um, you know, they can form, there's nothing stopping people from forming a committee and a nonprofit and doing the same exact thing. Um, so that's why I would approve to move to approve ordinance number one, 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 six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Palmer, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Kaminsky.
I just feel we've had, heard some very strong testimony today from the people in the audience, which thank you for coming. I feel a little bit of miscommunication when we talked about the homelessness. The impression was that nobody stood up, nobody took charge of it, and now, uh, we've put a lot of, uh, emphasis on the love of bounds and now they're gone. And so this is a change of circumstance. So I was going to suggest that we table this and keep talking about it if these are two very important things that we don't want to remove from our ordinance.
That is a possibility, but it has been motion seconded to approve ordinance number one, one, six. Um, there's still discussion. Councilmember Hess.
Uh, I would like to point out that even though, as was stated by, uh, coun, uh, councilmember uh, Crossman, that just because a committee has not met, that was the responsibility of the administration slash mayor. If the mayor doesn't find it important while they are in their term, then they choose not to fill it. Uh, so from part of the testimony that was given was that Mayor Harding felt it was to sideline that, uh, Mayor Foster did not, uh, fill it up. And in fact, Mayor Foster may not have even known that it was there if it was removed from the website or moved from a pass-on. And so I asked you, Mayor D'Antoni, did you know that we were supposed to fill this or was it something that also disappeared after the Harding administration?
I knew of his existence, but I did not know, um, per past, um, past, um, I guess, operational operations, that it was in existence, uh, or is that it was used? Sorry, this.
Ice cream.
The ice cream, man. Um, that it was fused. I chose not to fill it, um, citing past practice. However, if there is a need and it sounds like there's a want from the community to fill it, I will fill it. Um, so if council decides not to approve this, I would go ahead and fill the committee. Councilmember Palmer.
I was like, one of the things that came up in our discussion on it was if it, if we have a community members that want to re-engage any of these, they can come, uh, yeah, address us and we can put it back in if it becomes a, if there's a big community outreach and they're like, hey, we want the library committee back. We want to staff it with all these people. We're more than happy to put it back on the books, but nobody's approached this in over a decade. So it's one of those things. It's like, like Crossman, Crossman said, now it's an issue because we decided to clean the books up.
Something, so also if there's any other council members that wish to speak first, and then we'll get to you. Councilmember Kaminsky.
Nobody stepped forward till right now. Even if it is at the last minute, it's something that seems pretty intense for people.
Is there anyone else in the council wishes to, on this topic? Sir?
So I'll, I'll just say, um, as a public library manager, we often, we often communicate with the community via the Friends of the Library Committee. So we have friends, we have community members who do come to the library, who do engage, and we communicate that way. So I think sometimes maybe people, like I took this job in November of twenty twenty-three. So I don't know necessarily all the bureaucracy and all the meetings and all the committees. Um, so for me, it's a little bit of ignorance of not knowing of the committee, but there's definitely interest in the community to know what's going on in the library. So that does exist. It just maybe there just isn't that, that communication just gets missed. It's not necessarily on anyone's fault. It just, you know, stuff gets missed by different groups. So I do know though that there are already about a dozen members of the community who are engaged in a committee to be informed what's going on in the library. I just don't, I just think this is maybe the first time they found out about it. And I know sometimes once they find out, oh, it exists, it's being taken away. Oh, maybe we don't want it to be gone. So I think that's just kind of what's going on, but.
Can I present an alternative?
We should, councilmember Palmer, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, can we maybe just have a standing, uh, special presentation from the library, like every six months or so where you, you could come in with all your, all, all the people and we can hear what's going on at the library and on the cameras for everybody to see and we can do, go about it that direction.
We can talk about that, but that's not, um, I know it's not a part of this, but just to throw that out there. Sure, and, you know, we, we could talk about that, but we have a motion and a second on table right now. Councilor Crossman.
I just want to respond. I, you just gave a great example. You already have a committee, Friends of the Library, that talks about library stuff and gets the word out. And, you know, my family is greatly involved in the library, go there a lot. You know, I'm sure a lot of people here do that. So, I mean, there's, it's not like there's lack of communication. I don't think there's any lack of communication. The library is a big part of the community. So, you know, this having another committee is like, okay, well, we already have this great communication line set up between, you already have a committee, we already have people that use the library, we conversate. Yeah.
All right, it's been motion second. Is there any further discussion? We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Kingizer.
Sorry, I know I put my hand up at the very last minute, but I just wanted to be very clear that the motion is literally to repeal the committees. The motion is literally to repeal the committees and not. The action.
Correct, the, the, the motion was to approve ordinance number one, one, six repealing chapter two point three, six and chapter two point six, three from the old municipal code, which is the homelessness committee and the old library advisory board. There's been a motion second to approve this ordinance, is there any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, Councilmember Kaminsky, how do you vote?
No.
Councilor Palmer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilor Hess, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Kingizer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilor Crossman?
Yes.
Councilor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilor Wood?
Hi.
Thank you, carriers. Thank you for coming out and testifying on this, um, thank you council for your deliberations, moving on to ordinance number one, one, seven, amending the gambling tax. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, um, so we have ordinance one, 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 seven in front of you. Um, this is to amend um a section of the gambling tax. We did discuss this at the last study session, we also discussed it at the last finance committee. Um, so basically, section three point four zero point oh, two, oh, part E of the gambling tax municipal code. Um, reads that we currently impose a three percent tax on the gross receipts from punchboards and pool tabs. So we've had some, um, some operators come forward and request from the city that we change that um calculation from gross receipts to net receipts. Um, state a law allows us to impose a tax rate of up to ten percent on net receipts. Um, the finance committee did meet and they are proposing that we drop that to a three percent tax on net receipts. In addition to that, we want to add into section three point four, oh, point oh, three, oh. Um, that in order for us to review the net receipts, we request a copy of the operator's quarterly license report as outlined in WAC two thirty, oh, six, one, twenty four. This is the um report that they submit to the Washington State Gambling Commission that just shows how they came up with their um. Their net receipts, and so that would allow us to kind of. Gauge how this is working and, and kind of follow it for maybe a year or so, and then come back to council and give a report on. You know, this is what we're seeing, this is the revenues coming in from this change, so those are the two um recommendations, and. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Hess?
Uh, when we were having the discussion, it was brought up that uh not just the pull tabs that are done at the various establishments here, but also this. Ordinance supposedly also uh it affects bingo, various other game.
Uh, we are only addressing the punchboards and the pull tabs.
I just wanted to make sure that, because I remember that that was part of the discussion that they fall under the same thing, I just want to make sure what we are actually going after.
And just for, for profit op- operators.
Thank you.
Councilor Palmer? Uh, move to approve ordinance number one, 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 seven, updating Yale Municipal Code Title three point four, amending tax rate on punchboards and pull tabs, our following documentation to return.
There a second? Wait, wait, Councilor Wood, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In post, say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Stephanie. Moving on to old business, there is none scheduled, moving on to standing council committee reports, I will um start off with the um. The government committee, which we just had our first meeting, and I appointed Councilor Kingizer as the chair for this committee. Um, congratulations, Councilor, um, do you want to go ahead and give the report? You just kind of briefly talk about what we discussed.
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, it was a helpful, effective. Meeting for our first meeting on the agenda, we discussed really about the expectations and the responsibilities we're going to be for uh that committee. Um, we discussed future agenda items and how that is. Is decided, I found it interesting that every Tuesday there are planning sessions to determine uh those agenda items, they really do have them planned out for the year. Um, of course, with different movement of different items that do come up. We talked about work plan and uh how to prioritize future discussion items, um council items of interest, and then we also discussed topics for upcoming meetings. I think we're off to a very good start.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, moving on to public safety committee.
Moving to meeting.
Public services committee.
Well, Matt, today, we talked about the Road and Road project, we need updates since uh the bypass kind of kickstarts. The plans to improve Road and Road because that will be a major uh store where people get to get from the bypass to downtown Yell. So we'll be seeing a lot of Road and Road uh stuff come before us as council here in the next, within the next year. Um, they're talking about changing the CBD zoning, allowing some housing. Uh, if you guys remembered, we had changed the zoning, the codes to restrict housing. But uh, um, city has identified areas that are pretty residential with small lots that doesn't make sense for commercial. So they're talking about rezoning to allow some residential building with, you know, there's parameters to that. Uh, which sounds like a good idea, that makes sense. And then we talked about the memorial park, veterans park um concept. And at the same time, as that gets built out, we will improve that intersection, you know, if you know Mill Road, you know, on the. Was that five, ten, is that what it is? Five or seven, yeah, it changes now to really uh improve that, you know, to that road, if you ever had a say in that intersection, it can be a bear.
Thank you, Councilmember Crossman. Uh, finance committee. All right, moving on to mayor city minister staff reports, Todd.
We're just a couple of updates, uh, let's start with the municipal court, uh, court next week is moved to Tuesday instead of Thursday, it's kind of a big deal. Punctuated last on Thursday, so court will be Tuesday for anyone wishing to attend, taking that. Uh, on the police side of things, uh, they completed detective testing last week, uh detective assessment center was conducted. Um, to find uh our next detective, and of course, they were very busy with the whole Prairie Days um over the weekend. Including getting second place in the mush ball tournament. Um, they played for the championship once again, they got second place, uh, it's not just young police, Thurston County and. Uh, maybe Niskuale, they had quite a few agencies in there. Um, human resources, uh, union negotiations are ongoing. Um, we're gonna provide an update here at the next council meeting, I believe, uh, as far as where we are with union negotiations, so we'll have that. Uh, from the IT side of things, uh, the digital reader board over by Boys and Girls Club is just about ready to be installed, um, so stand by for that. Um, public services, of course, Prairie Days was a major focal point. Uh, parking lot looks fantastic, if you haven't seen it down there, uh, just a few left, uh, leftover uh things there was the uh. EV charging, the lights, um, side decoding.
And just the arrows, the arrows should be there now.
Just there, just there, it'll be there now. For the finance department, of course, the uh audit will start, our annual audit will start July eleventh. And um they are busy uh working on building the budget calendar, um, that will guide us for twenty five and twenty six. And I just would have to say at the very end, I know the mayor's probably going to say this too, is that uh deep sincere appreciation for everyone involved in the Prairie Days, our one hundred year. Celebration over the weekend, it was fantastic, um, everything, great comments, great feedback from everyone. Um, everyone had a, had a hand in that, including council, uh, for supporting the LTAC funding to make that all happen. Uh, none of that would have happened uh without that, so thank you. Um, and of course, numerous staff, almost every staff had some sort of involvement in that, so I just wanted to publicly point that out. That's it for me.
Well, you stole my love of the Prairie Days. No, uh, yeah, starting off with that, though, I, I would just agree that, um, thank you, council, first of all, for your approving all that funding, um, I know it wasn't. LTAC funding isn't necessarily general budget fund, is funds, but you still had to approve the actual um events and what, what that paid for, thank you for your um. Um, your vision on that and um approving it, so thank you so much for making it happen. Uh, again, all the people that made it work between police with the parade with this, um, making sure everyone was safe at the Prairie Days Festival. Uh, public services, all the people that were making sure everything was before, they prepped before to make sure our streets are extra clean for that day. Um, everyone manning the, the booths, uh, not booths, but the parade route. Um, Lynn for organizing all this, all the local partners, yeah, it was just a really good event, the drone show was amazing. Uh, the bands were awesome, it was, it was good, it was, everyone seemed to be really happy at the event and enjoy it, so thank you, and I saw a lot of your faces out there too during. The festival, so thank you all for attending and joining in. Uh, other than that, now, I was really excited for the parking lot being done, I know we were just kind of sweating it, uh, it was literally finished at the last minute, the, the day before. I think it was completed right coding, so, um, people were able to utilize it um for that party, for the um parade's. Um, events, and yeah, businesses are starting to use it now as well, thank you so much for approving that and moving forward with more parking for our downtown area and our events. Uh, I attended the AWC conference, I know Councilor Wood attended as well, thank you for attending, Councilor Wood. Um, he's further along most people, I think, in your um uh municipal leadership um accreditation, so thank you for that. And that's all I got, thank you uh for your deliberation, I know there were some hard decisions council had to make tonight, um, thank you for deliberations and. Entertaining questions and answering questions on that, so that's all I've got. Councilmember report, starting with Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I uh did, as, as mentioned, I did attend the AWC conference and uh. I was surprised at how, how much there was to learn there, um, this nonstop input for days and they kept it interesting, you know, and I, I didn't find myself grueling at any point thinking that uh. I would, uh, maybe gotten myself in further than I should have, um, they gave us, as you know, they gave us opportunities to kind of mingle and take a break and. And uh, that was, it was, it was a good opportunity, and uh, I think the, the biggest takeaway was that what I was hoping to and looking forward to the most was sitting in Anne McFarland's uh Jurassic Parliament. Really informative, and I recommend anybody uh gets a chance to watch any of her videos, she's, she's direct to the point, makes it really easy, it's almost like Kevin Cody explains stuff to you. Uh, I did, uh, participated in the parade with my business and my employees were all just really excited about it and uh. Really uh got involved, like, it, it seemed like it uh, it was back when we first got started, it was nice. And of course, the bands uh were amazing, another one of my employees was out there on the stage, so we were there to cheer him on, and uh, it was, it was great. That's my report.
You know, Councilor Richardson?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Crossman?
Um, so, and the ribbon cutting for the trail, it's pretty cool, if you haven't been down it, like, man, you check it out. All the way up to the end, uh, we attended steady, and it was very humorous at the point of Olympia handed out. Ginormous sized checks to our smaller communities for some grant funds they had, um, so that was fun, but it was also kind of, it was fun. Check out this checks, you know, that you see on TV, um, ten Prairie Days, it was great, uh, Councilmember Wood looked good in his little pinstripe suit there he had. All the confetti flying, uh, had a lot of fun. And um, I got to test out the new parking lot, and I forgot that it was there. I landed there because there was no other parking spots anywhere else, I'm like, oh, yeah, we have a parking lot. And there were actually open spots in it, so uh, there was not, apparently, we gotta get to where that more, but it was disopen, you smell the asphalt in the air. And it was nice, but yeah, it was a, it was a good time, a lot of, a lot of people there. And, yeah, that's what I got.
Councilor Kingizer?
Um, I also went to the ribbon cutting for the Prairie Line Trail, I thought it was neat that um Andrew Barkus was actually there, and he said a few words as well. One of the striking things is that once all of these trailhead projects are completed, you could literally walk all across Washington. So don't know if I'll try that, but it seems fascinating.
Uh, for STP to be on there too. All for this.
Um, and then, yeah, I went to the Prairie Days concert, the drone show was absolutely amazing, I didn't actually really know what I was in for. Uh, but, but that was pretty stinking cool, um, I'm looking forward to our next big hundred year nod for barbecue rally. Um, opening like Jazz Fest in August, it's kind of cool, just watching the whole community come together and just have so many bam, 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 just celebration to a hundred years. A hundred years.
It comes once in a lifetime.
Okay.
Councilor Hess?
Uh, for intercity transit, um, they passed their audit with success. Also, uh, was reported about the uh state rodeo as well as some maintenance that. Once again, intercity transit is taking, bringing in all the awards with that. Uh, I also want to say that I saw the message about uh ITA bringing, uh, supporting. The barbecue festival with the chamber by providing buses. So, so I want to say that uh hopefully this will be a great success to see as proof of concept of doing. Um, reference to Prairie Days and Hunter's celebrate, Hunter's year, centennial celebration, I have to say it was well done, I'm glad we uh had it go the way it went. Um, I was checking out the park, seeing how it was filled with people, having music, all the other things, I want to say that the uh stage. I think we did, we, we did well with that, it projects very nicely all the way to the flagpole, uh, the sound and everything that goes with that, there's good visibility throughout the park of being able to see the stage. Uh, the only thing that kind of came up from that, and Director Colton will just let you know, um, the porta potties. All in one spot, kind of off to the side, somebody on the far side of the park uh has to make, you know, so maybe kind of spread those out. Uh, let's see, I was also happy to see the uh law enforcement uh support that was there, they were, you know, very talkative, they said that things were going well, and. It's good to see that our law enforcement uh is there putting on a good face and helping with that portion. Uh, also, the parking lot's good to see that, um, I would add, uh, Director Colton, this for you again, uh, I would ask that uh consider. For future one-way streets and uh parking lots, that they be back in parking. Uh, it's being shown that's a lot safer and it actually moves things a lot quicker when you have that. Uh, other than that, I just want to say to uh Ms. Roy, she did a great job organizing the whole thing, and so. I'm glad that we have her as a part of our administration.
Councilor Palmer?
Touched it all, but I'd like to thank city staff and the police for all their hard work during Prairie Days, you guys are awesome, so thank you.
Were you there?
I came after work for.
Councilor Kaminsky?
Well, I also went to Prairie Days, um, the beer garden was stuffed to the gill, so we need a bigger beer garden. And I think if there would have been more food trucks, people might have stayed longer because there was definitely a need for food. But the quality of the stage and the music was fantastic, I loved it, and the drone show was so unique and just so. It was wonderful, I loved it, so I hope we can make that a tradition, that would be great. Uh, so I did that and the ribbon cutting also I attended, and I missed my Niskuale River Council meeting this week, but I did something even more fun. I got the last ticket to the whitewater rafting trip, and that was fantastic, it was so interesting, so fun. It was on the day that it poured rain, it hailed on us, it was terrible weather, but we didn't care. And the most exciting thing was when our rafts drifted into this herd of elk who were standing in the middle of the river. And they had this look on their face, but when I turned around and looked up river, there were like literally nine rafts floating down with nine people in each raft. All bright colors, I'm like, I wonder what the heck they see when they look at us, because they were just like dumbfounded, and then they finally scampered away. So it was really, really enjoyable, I highly recommend it next year.
You know, Terry, I think I'm gonna take you hunting, you're good at finding elk.
Oh, my God, well, this time I know it's a herd of elk, not a gaggle of elk. Yeah, all right. This is something totally wrong.
No executive session scheduled, is there a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
I can clear.
Second by Councilor Crossman, beach by here. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
In post, say aye?
We're adjourned.